Okay, welcome to the board meeting tonight. We're meeting in Zoom for this May 24th board meeting. And the Board of Education has received a few requests to meet in person for this meeting. However, at this time, Zoom allows for a greater flexibility in conducting a board meeting without violating any piece of the current MDHIS orders. For some of our stakeholders, it also gives a greater chance to participate while sitting in a child sporting event, cooking dinner with the meeting playing on the counter, or various other advantages that have been found with technology. Board of Education meetings are designed to conduct the business of the district. Public comment is the formal process to address the Board of Education during a scheduled meeting. The Board of Education members regularly update themselves with personal research, personal experience, stakeholder correspondence, and personal conversations out in the community. The policies of a Board of Education are designed to ensure process and decorum, always including input from our many stakeholders. Thank you for joining us in the Zoom format this evening to observe and participate during public comment. Email is also always available to share your thoughts. So with that, shall we begin with the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. And Ms. Secretary Slager, if we could have a roll call from that far location that you are.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde. Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here.
Okay, thank you, and we have established a quorum for this evening's meeting. So we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for same.
Support. So moved. Sorry.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde. Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted as presented, and that brings us to gratitudes. And I'm grateful for the weather that gave everybody a breath fresh air and get out and relax this weekend and maybe even get on their boat. So a little bit of refueling for everyone.
Heidi, I'm thankful for the community involvement. We've had a chance to engage a lot with the members of the community and their feedback. I appreciate that. I also know it's been a hard school year for the students and for the teachers. It's been difficult, and we have 11 days left and looking forward to next year being fully normal, I certainly hope.
Thank you.
I would say my gratitude is I'm thankful that the community came together and the kiddos were able to have a prom, which looked like it was absolutely fantastic. So it was nice to see our kiddos being able to have some sort of a normal dance.
I'll tack on there with the community aspect. I know that over the course of the year, there's been a lot of community members praying for schools, and I just want to say thank you for that and really recognize their efforts. And yeah, thank you for praying. Thank you for God answering that. It seems like we're coming out of this, so.
I agree. We receive that help, thank you.
I'm glad we were able to have been concerted and choir. And start last week was a nice normalcy. Also, thank you to theater class, although it's really cool.
Good, thank you.
And I am incredibly grateful that we were able to have some greater flexibility with the outdoor attendance restrictions, which enabled us to open up graduation to as many people who want to join us. And without masks outdoors, which is an incredible thing, very thankful for that.
Great. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented, of course.
So moved.
For.
Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yeah.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde. Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the consent items are approved as presented. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session for pursuant to the Opens Meeting Act of Section 8B for student discipline.
So moved. Support. Or third support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde. Shannon, yes. Okay, trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. And with that, we'll move into closed session, and we need to turn off our microphone and our camera.
Hello.
Okay, we're transitioning back from closed session.
All here just waiting for Shannon's video to come back up.
I think it's trying to hook up. There she is.
I'm gonna send her a quick text and letter. There we go. Sometimes if you take the, if you leave your camera off, then you're, you have greater bandwidth for audio, so it could just, if anyone runs into bandwidth troubles, we can just click the cameras or their camera off, and then they can just do like audio channel.
Okay.
But there's, they'll still be recorded in the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we'll let the minutes show, Chris, that we're rolling back into open session at 6:47, and we will proceed with discussion items. And first up, we have literacy resource for consideration with Jen Haberling, and this is a second read, and on for action tonight. Correct, so I would be glad to answer any questions you have about Amplify's core knowledge sequence that we would be adopting as a resource to use to build our curriculum for K5 literacy. It was a very thorough presentation the first time. Thank you, Heidi. We did have questions, so I don't know if we'll have any additional. Okay. Looking like we do not. All right. Okay, so we'll be seeing this again in action. Thank you. So for item B, we have food service equipment purchase combi ovens with Chris Lahey.
Yep, so this is a second read on these combi ovens as well as presented on May 10th. Did reveal the bid results on that date, and so this is up for action this evening. As a quick recap, this was our bid. We're recommending the board approve the purchase of the combination ovens from HPS down in Middleville for a cost not to exceed $69,236 out of the Food Service Fund. And we can still get those in place in time for summer school in this fiscal year.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions regarding the combi ovens? I will say thank you to Holly and the kitchen staff in readings, thing about public schools this weekend. It looks like we're, we have a lot more fresh food and are fortunate where some people may not, so this looks like it'll help that along too.
Yep, you do a great job.
Okay. We'll move on to discussion item C, the 2021 SBS bonds and SBLF refunding bond sale with Chris.
All right, so the day immediately following our last board meeting on May 11th, we had the privilege of selling the first series of our school building and site bonds that we've been reporting to you, and you see some work around the community already happening. And then the refunding of our current school loan revolving fund debt to save taxpayers' dollars. So this is a recap of that sale. First things up, the large ticket item, the school building and site bonds, it's a great time to issue. So what I'd like to do is just take everyone through this. So in our construction fund, you can see the budgeted amount, and this budgeted amount was what went to Treasury back when we filed in late 2019. So the par amount of the bonds was to be $32,300,000. And you can see that we had an approximate underwriters discount, and that's really the fee for the underwriter to sell and market the bonds of 323,000, and then issuance costs of just north of 166,000 would leave us with 31,810,869 in our construction fund for this first series of construction work. Where we actually came in two Tuesdays ago was much better. So you can see that the par amount of the bonds that we sold was actually 28,550,000, and that was because we were paid such a premium. You know, we were a desirable district, we're a safe bet as we reported from our, from our S&amp;P Global Ratings Call, and quite frankly, you know, the bond market is very favorable to issuing right now. So we were able to have all of that come in from a standpoint of just paying, you know, to borrow the money or to buy the bonds. The underwriters discount came in much, much lower, much in our favor as well, and then you can see the bond issuance costs actually were lower as a result of splitting some of those costs over the refunding. So the way it netted out, you can see that we actually were able to deposit $341,000 more to our construction fund than was budgeted. So fantastic news, you know, especially as we see construction and, you know, supply prices rise, hopefully they're, they're, they're going up and we'll see them come back down, but it's something that we're being mindful of, and it's good to see great news here on the, on the bond sale front. Before I take questions on this, I also, probably more exciting is the debt service. So think about this as selling the bonds to, to receive the money to purchase your home, and then you have a mortgage that you pay over the next 30 years. So that's our debt service is what we'll repay over the next however many years. You can see what was, what was put into the Treasury application was that we would have 32.3 million in bond principal and approximately 30,200,000 in an interest, okay, for a total of $62 million that would be repaid through debt collected from our seven mills of debt levy. Where we came in, again, the bond principal ended up only costing or only, only being 28,550,000, and then we're projecting that the interest on those bonds will be just 15 and a half million, 15.5 million. So where that leaves us, it's pretty astounding to see, but where we budgeted to where we will end up is over $18 million less in property tax that will need to be collected to retire this debt. So fantastic news, long and the short of it, interest rates on the Treasury app, I put it right down here, ranged from 2.7% to 5%, and our actual yield and yield to maturity came in at .34% to 2.63%. Again, depending on when those bonds matured. So just a really great savings there on the debt side as well. So more dollars for bond construction, and we'll pay down the debt years and years in advance, just a really big win as we sell this first series of bonds. So before I transition to the refunding of the school bond loan fund, any questions about this bond sale or any of these figures that you see on the screen?
I would just be curious about the, the interest that we budgeted. $15 million off on that, I'm not questioning you, but is that something that we didn't see coming, or was that budget made? Or, help me out.
Yep, nope, great question. So that was actually budgeted based on the rates in the market. When this went to Treasury, which Scott, you have to help me, I believe it was November of 2019. So it predated my employment with the district, but it also predated something really, really even more significant, which is COVID-19. And so, you know, that was budgeted based on the market at the time, and we just had no way of foreseeing what, what lied ahead. So all that is regulated by the state, you know, it's not done solely by me or by Jeff, you know, before me. We really do that with our municipal advisor at Baker Tilly, they do a fantastic job. You know, it's just a lot has changed in the world, and, you know, on the flip side, we're not gonna earn as much in interest as what they had budgeted, but, you know, obviously we have some savings out here on front, upfront, so.
Yeah, the initial budgeted amount was based on interest rates in that three and a half to four percent ballpark, and where we ended up was being in that ballpark of, you know, one and a half to two percent. And so, you know, just by that, we're cutting the interest rate in half and also cutting the amount paid in interest.
Yeah, it's, I mean, and it's important to note that at that three and a half percent interest rate, you know, your municipal advisors always want to be safe, you know, they don't want to say that you can borrow more and then end up having to raise the debt levy down the road. So it isn't, it is a relatively safe projection, but, I mean, because of COVID, it really ended up being a little bit lopsided, you know?
And then can we go back up to the sale, the budgeted sale, the actual sale, and then that line of plus bond premium discount? Can you describe that line a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So when investors purchase our bonds, you know, they'll actually, much like a home sale, they'll actually offer to pay a premium on the bonds. And so that's really like lowering your rate, and they'll pay more to, to purchase those bonds. And so we get to keep that, essentially, we get to keep that premium, and it just makes it so that we don't have to sell as much par amount of, as of bonds. We can't, we can't sell more than we had in the Treasury application, but it's really just a savings, and it's just shown in that regard, so. Yep. And that's pretty typical right now with the way the market is, you know, there's a lot more investors than there is bonds for sale, and so they're willing to step up and really kind of outbid the market to get these bonds because they are such a safe investment. Right, I'll jump over to the school bond loan fund then real quick. This was a great opportunity for us as well. We had just about $3 million that we were borrowing or going to borrow from the school loan revolving fund. If you remember me speaking about this before, when I first brought this to the board meeting, I want to say it was back in January or February, said, hey, if we can save $200,000 from the taxpayers, again, this is all debt fund money, then it's a win, and it's worth it for us. So you can see here, we refunded 2.9, 2.972 million, and, and we were able to secure bonds that have rates ranging from 1.02% to 1.56%. Obviously, a significant savings from 3%. So we're projecting after the bond, bond issuance costs to save just over $260,000. You know, it's nothing like what we saw on the previous slide, but once again, on 3 million, if we can save quarter of a million dollars for the taxpayers and retire that debt quicker, we're gonna do it 10 out of 10 times. So next year will be the last year that we actually need to borrow from the school loan revolving fund, and I'll come back to you as a board and ask to do this again if we can save another quarter of a million dollars. And then after that, we will be in repayment mode, we will no longer have to borrow, and we'll just, we'll be bringing in enough from our own debt levy every year to, to meet our principal and interest payments as these, as these bonds mature. So in the action items this evening, this was really the purpose for this meeting, and we've tacked on quite a bit more information as, as it's come to fruition, but we have the ratifying resolutions attached in board book for both the 2021 school building and site bonds and then the 2021 refunding bonds for action this evening.
I just have a quick comment. I think it's absolutely fantastic, $20 million that we don't have to pay back. That's just amazing. It's hard for me to wrap my head around being in the business, I don't think I've ever seen anything like that, so kudos, well done. That's.
Market helped.
Yeah, well.
Perfect storm of timing, but we'll take it.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, we'll move on to discussion item E, the KIASB board election, and Scott has that information.
Hey, just one other thought here real quick, Scott, sorry to jump in. On that $20 million savings, is there a way that we can get that out to the public, you know, to let them know, hey, guys, you know, we said 60, but now it's 40. So just a thought.
It's something we're gonna work with Amy on to really, to get something out in a newsletter, and just, I mean, what this basically means is that, you know, we said we were, it was going to take until this date to repay our debt, you know, for these bonds, and we're gonna slide that back a significant number of years. So that's a great thing for everyone to see, we were just kind of waiting for it to get to the board meeting and then actually receive the funds, and it's, it'd be a great thing to get out here in June. Scott, I don't know if you had other plans?
No, that was the utilizing me and also go, we've got a print newsletter that's coming out in the first week of June, and we'll utilize that as an opportunity to share, give the details of the, some highlights and updates about the current construction projects that are underway, the planning for the future construction projects are on the shortlist, and also provide some, some updates to start the sale of comments, which is a reality that we're, we're tied together for, for that.
Scott, I don't know if you have any ability to adjust your microphone, but it's, it's really different, or maybe it's just me, but it's really difficult to hear you.
It's a little rocky.
Yeah.
It might be the fan in the background. I see it going.
Might be. All right, now I know that we had jumped to the KIASB election, but I believe I had one other discussion item.
Did I miss it? Sorry.
Yep, no, no problem at all. This is typically something that I bring to the, the first June meeting along with, along with the budget, you know, it's part of the budget hearing and part of the budget presentation, but having this special meeting, I thought it'd be nice if we could get this really done tonight, and then we could just take action on the 14th, and that would make all of our township treasurers very happy because they've already been asking me for the L4029, which is the form you'll see in here, so it'll get them what they need two weeks earlier. So I'll run through this really quickly. This is something that you may recall from, from last year. Our truth and taxation hearing will actually be on June 14th along with that budget hearing, but this is just a, just a fun preview of that, and then we'll be able to run right through it. So you may recall this from every year, it's an annual discussion that we have, it's called the Headley rollback. So we have to take action as a, as a local unit, basically to have this hearing, we'll post it in Cedar Springs Post, and it allows us to, to use this calculation to decide or to determine the tax rate that you'll see. So property tax revenue gets rolled back, we can't exceed, the amount of revenue that we receive cannot exceed the rate of inflation, okay? So we have to, I have to run this calculation. We take our, our previous year, which is the 2020 taxable value, well, you can see it on the screen here, as long as we have the hearing and we post the hearing, we get to multiply this fraction by the CPI, okay, which is 1.4% as posted. If we don't hold the hearing, then we wouldn't be able to multiply by that CPI, okay? So same thing is, is every year I put the, the law in here, I know we have some, some community members that are big into our laws, so here this is, if you're interested in that. And this basically just goes through what I just said, the district doesn't hold a truth and taxation hearing, which officially will be on June 14th, we have to reduce our levy by the fraction without multiplying by CPI. Regardless, we have to reduce our levy by this fraction with CPI if it exceeds the consumer price index. So when we put numbers to this for this year, you can see our current year taxable value for the, for the district is 134,588,088. You can see the 2021 losses and then the 2021 additions, our 2021 taxable value that was just announced, you can see what kind of increase we had, it's 148 million dollars, okay? So when we take that and we multiply that by the consumer price index, again, of 1.4%, you get a .9944. And so what that means is even with the truth and taxation hearing, excuse me, we're gonna have to have a rollback because we just can't collect that much in property taxes. Unfortunately, that's money that's lost that we cannot recover, so the state doesn't make up for that in any way. The only way we could avoid the rollback is to pass a non-homestead millage to pass so that we could levy over 18 mills, and then when the rollback happens, we're, we're held harmless, okay? So what's it costing the general fund? So I ran this calculation last year as well, the number has gone up because we got rolled back again, okay? So if we took all of our non-principal residency and all of our commercial personal property, and we did it at 18 mills and six mills, which state law says that that's the maximum amount that we can, that we can levy, we would see general fund revenue coming in 2.6 million 95,722, okay? Because of our rollback and that .9944 value that I have to. value that I have to multiply by, and we've already been rolled back in previous years, we can only actually level levy 17.8168% on principal residencies and 5.8168% on or sorry mills on commercial personal property. Okay, and what that does, it makes a difference of 28,545 dollars. All right? That's just lost revenue that we don't get to keep. All right. But it is worth noting that because we get to multiply by the Consumer Price Index by having the truth and taxation hearing, $38,000 more into the general fund coffers. Okay? Any questions about any of this? I know it's kind of a strange process and I go through it relatively quickly. I'd be happy to explain it or sit down with anybody that has more questions. But otherwise, I'll just keep rolling. Okay.
Yep, you can roll.
Keep on rolling. All right. So despite being rolled back, the debt and sinking funds are projected to have significantly increased revenues of 5.37%. So that you take into consideration the money that we saved there from the bond sale because of property taxes going up, nobody's, nobody's millage rate is increasing. In fact, our our non homestead property millage rate is decreasing, but property taxes are going up. So the district is going to receive more in revenues. All right, and homeowners are going to pay more in revenues. It's a good slash bad problem to have. You can see that the debt funds that we will bring in next year will be $250,000 more. So we'll bring in a total of 4.9 million dollars for 4,918,925. And then sinking fund, which is our last year of collecting the sinking fund without a renewal, will be 29,000 more than we we received this year. We'll bring 678,138 in for the sinking fund. So this is the L4029 that you are used to seeing every year. Again, this will be adopted hopefully at our June 14th board meeting. And you can see as we go through this, our previous Headley reduction was from the 18 mills on, again, non homestead property. This is your second home, your vacation home, if you own it. Otherwise, you're not paying this. It's just a principal residency in the district. Previously, we rolled back to 17.9172 mills. And because of the reduction this year, that's going to come back down to 17.8168. And the only way to restore that is again with a vote to increase that above 18 mills. And then for the sinking fund, we're rolled back again. Here, we were at point 9915. Next year, we will actually only be able to levy point 9651 because of what we have been rolled back. All right, so we will get this approved at the next board meeting. If anybody has any questions in the meantime, again, this is just to show and get you prepared for that. We'll need to take action and that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? And Shannon is with us, even though her screen is dark, she's conserving bandwidth for her speaking.
That's very good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the K I A S B board election with Scott Smith.
Okay, so I provided you with a copy of the resolution naming Matt as the primary representative for the Board of Education. I will act as Matt's backup in the event that he's not able to participate in the voting process on June 7. There are two vacant seats up for election at the Kent ISD Board of Education. The first seat is a six-year term from January 1st, excuse me, July 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2027. And there are two individuals that are pursuing that seat. The first is hold on just for a moment, please. So the two individuals, Matthew Redding and Kyle Clement, those two are both interested in the six-year term. I, there is a secondary attachment that provides a biography for each of the candidates. The only individual that did not have a biography was Kyle Clement. He's currently one of the board members for Caledonia Public Schools. So Matt is from, is currently serving on the Kent ISD Board and he is from Kennel Hill. The partial year term, the second seat that's open runs from July 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2027. There are three individuals pursuing that position. Eric John Sherpatsky is from Kennel Hill, currently serving on that board. Laura Featherstone is, or Featherstone, excuse me, is from Rockford Public Schools. She's had experience on the Kent ISD Board of Education. And then the last candidate of interest for the partial year term is Beth Click Milonowski. She is from East Grand Rapids and is interested in serving at the at the county level in addition to the in addition to the to the local level. So other than that, I don't know anything about the candidates, other than what's been provided. Diedrich Martin, Dr. Diedrich Martin did reach out to me on behalf of Kyle Clement and asked that I pass along Dr. Martin's support for Kyle as a board member. And Dr. Heidi Catula from East Grand Rapids also reached out to me on behalf of Beth, just saying what an outstanding board member she was in the East Grand Rapids Public School District.
Okay. Any questions? For Scott? Or discussion? All right. We will see where we end up in action with the motion for who we'd like you to choose. Right? Okay, all right. We'll move forward to the next discussion item, and that is the Board of Education position statement. And it's my mine to present. Last month or meeting, we talked about having a position statement and sending that to our government officials. And we went a couple of different ways on it. We went discussion and I could write the letter. And after reflection, it seemed to make sense to bring it back to the board. So it could be formally approved and entered into the minutes because as a board, we do speak through our minutes. So Matt, if you have a, Matt also had a point of policy that played into this too.
Yeah, and I was trying to find it. Well, it should actually be in the minutes as far as the bylaw that's referenced. With that bylaw, that really anytime we're submitting something formally to legislation, we should vote as a board to endorse that. So the majority of the board would would influence whatever we're sending to the legislation. So that's why, you know, it's, it makes a lot of sense for Heidi to bring this back and have all of us vote on it. And that way our voice is heard.
Okay, I do appreciate the thought, but this is going to be great. So is there any further discussion? It is on for action tonight or any questions? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we're moving to public comment, and this is the time that we would have people address the board for three minutes to share their thoughts or concerns. And not that the board would take action on that tonight, we would have our superintendent follow up, but definitely a listening time. So do we have any indicators that we have people that would like to speak or address the board?
We do. Mr. Dwayne Gritter is the first individual that I'll be opening the mic for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, your mic is open, yes.
Okay, I have a written statement I'm going to present here in a minute, but I'd like to first of all, comment on the statement that the president, I believe, is a position made when we first started this meeting referencing Zoom and the convenience of it. Fact of the matter, Zoom is a terrible way to work with the public. I am currently sitting in a Rockford board meeting where they have the board in one room and the public in another. The board is sitting six feet apart and the public are crammed in two feet apart. That's stupid. Second of all, I don't really understand why you boards are scared of the public. We put you in that position to do job for us and then you hide from us. I don't think I'm the only one out there that's feeling the same way. My statement. I've been in conversation with Scott, of course. Name is Dwayne Gritter, Ziegler County, Michigan. At the last meeting, and you just said you will respond to people between meetings. At the last meeting as board, I had requested a copy of the oath of office of each of the members. You have a copy of my email address and I have been in communication with you. I have yet to receive those written records. Yeah, Scott provided me with a video to watch that was done sometime back in January. But beyond that, I have not seen any written records proving that all of you have taken the oath or have done the acceptance of office. So I am once again requesting that. I am once again requesting all of those records. Also to be included, I'm requesting the superintendent's record of swearing of the oath and acceptance to office. I did not answer that previously. I am asking for it now. I hope I don't have to ask for it again at the next meeting. To be compliant to be compliant with the MCL 168.308 and 309, this board must not only possess the above mentioned above mentioned records, but they must be filed with your district election coordinator coordinator and or the Kent County Board of Elections. Currently, county having provided me with all that they have, I can now verify all of your members. At least three of your members do not show up. These members have not filed an acceptance to office. According to Michigan law, their suits, their seats are to be considered vacant. I hope we can find this within the next two weeks. Please consider the above and provide me with the information requested or remove from this board those who are considered illegitimate in the eyes of the law. That's my comment, folks. You got to really consider what's going on here. I just told you, I'm at Rockford and they have separated the public from the board. You guys have done the same thing and you think it's a convenience that you can be sitting at a ballgame. What kind of attention are you paying to your public citizens, your taxpayers, those that put you in office if you're behaving that way? We're seeing it. Everybody's seeing it. Some of you coming up in '22 better consider looking for something else to do. You've got people sitting out in your parking lot. It's my understanding that they had a public parking lot, community meeting, because you guys would not meet with them in person. I've been attending board meetings and school board meetings all over the county that have had public meetings face to face, no masks. What are you guys doing?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gritter. We will move on to anyone else that would like to address the board at this time?
I have one other individual listed as John as a guest, so I will open up John's mic. If you could introduce yourself, please. And then you can begin your public comment.
John, if you could introduce yourself, please. And then you can begin your public comment.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. There's a little bit of feedback in the background, but we can hear you.
Here we go. My name's John X. And yes, as what Dwayne led in with, there is a group of us standing behind me, if you can see them, of people here of our community. So we are, we're here sitting in front of your school district here at Hilltop, wondering where our representation is. We are absolutely 100% fed up with lack of representation by our elected members. We would like you to represent us. I've already slapped you guys with the color of law, 18 USC 241 and 242, showing that you are violating all our rights. There is a lawsuit pending against you guys via me. I'm waiting for it to be verified. And when it is, I'm telling you, I'm done with it. There may be more than eight seats available in the school district. Think I'm joking? I'm not. The other thing I'd like to note, put on record, we had to move from it's us and Lake because you guys want to open up the schools. They give our students here an opportunity of lifetime of memories. How does that make you guys feel? Got to be pretty horrible. The other thing, I'm getting so much thing about lack of transparency. Why haven't you guys sent out a letter saying that you've opened up graduation yet? It's simple stuff, guys. You don't, you're here to support and voice our concerns, us. Represent us, yeah. So we can either pass my phone around and everybody else can speak with comments and concerns because you guys already know me. But I'm just showing you the community is here. We're sitting in the parking lot where you guys work. Where are you? Is that $600 or $500 a month really worth it? Because frankly, I don't want to pay any of you. I would love for all of you to resign tonight, every single one of you. Put someone up there that's willing to do their jobs because you honestly haven't showed me anything. Not one of it. You talk? Where's the letter from Sparta? I know you guys are talking about it again tonight. We want action. Our children want it. Our taxpayers want to be accountable for. So please, represent us. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Are we seeing any indicators?
I've got an individual listed as April Patton. So I will open up April's mic.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Wonderful. Heidi, thank you so much for drafting that letter to go to the health department. I'm just wondering, like, what is the setback on it? I was hoping that would have already been sent out. I do recall in the last meeting, it was stated that you didn't have to have anyone approve it. So I'm, I guess maybe I don't know the process very well, but I was really hoping that that would have already went out. Another thing is, I'm like on the fence about the whole if you're vaccinated, you can take your mask off situation. I understand, like, that's what was handed down to you guys. And I know, like, you're just trying to follow policy that's like governed by the state. But at the same time, if it violates our rights under the Constitution, isn't that something that you need to stand up for and not back down on? Our, like, my kids personally are worried about feeling like crap. They don't want to lie and say, yeah, I've been vaccinated when my mom's not going to let me be vaccinated so I can take my mask off and breathe fresh air. Like, that's not fair to any kid. No kid should have to and I kind of like how you tried to sneak in there, you know, we won't ask. So it's a don't ask, don't tell. But at the same rate, what about the kids in the elementary? What are they going to do? They don't have that option. They can't get, and it's not even a vaccine, guys. Let's call it what it is. It's an experimental drug. And if you don't know, if you have life insurance on yourself for your kids and you get that experimental drug and you happen to die from it, which I had a friend die from it two weeks ago, your health insurance won't pay for the health costs, your life insurance won't pay for the death cost. So is the state going to pay for it? We all know the state's not going to pay for it, right? So you're stuck paying for that stuff. You just spent all that money on life insurance. For what? For for a stupid shot that might not work or it might work? Who knows? But I'm just saying, like, is that a chance you want to take on your kids? It's not a chance I want to take on my kids. They mean a lot to me. If I lost my kid to, I gave them the COVID shot just so they could take their mask off and I lost them, I might lose my mind. And you probably won't like me after that one. So why? I just don't get why we can't push back. Why are you not pushing back? Why don't you care as much as we do? Do you have kids? Do you care about your kids? Doesn't it scare you to death to lose a kid to a shot that's there's not even FDA approved, guys? Go to the CDC website and look at the deaths that have been caused by it. And you want me to put it in my kid so he can take his mask off? I'm asking you, please push back. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? That we're seeing an indicator.
I'm seeing no other hands raised at this time.
Okay.
So what is the protocol? It appears as though John would like to raise, has raised his hand for a second time to address the board.
Maybe someone wants to use his phone. We've already heard from John.
So I'll open up the line, and we'll see what the, what the situation is. Okay, John's phone.
Hi, yeah, I don't have my phone. So I have to use his.
So your name and contact information.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Um, who are you and your contact information, please?
My name is Angel Bott. I reside within Cedar Springs at one seven five North Seventh Street, Cedar Springs, Michigan, four nine three one nine.
Thank you.
Um, so I know I spoke with some of you last week regarding mask and such with the changes. I do want to say thanks, Scott, for reaching out to me. You were actually a pleasant to speak with. You were very kind and courteous. You did listen to everything I had to say, so I do want to say thank you for that. I did ask for a healthy compromise of, you know, let's have the kids outside more that can't be vaccinated, or even all the way up. Let's have them outside doing more, learning their interactions, whichever. And I've been asking both students, families over the past week or so, how much of that has really been happening? And Scott, you told me it was happening throughout the year, which I found out only for, like, main certain days it happened. And it has not picked up at all. They haven't been doing any reading or math or writing. They've gone outside a couple of times for a couple of, you know, fifteen minute little activities. It's hot inside. They're wearing the mask. It needs to stop. It's nice outside. They don't have to wear the masks. So there's really no, no question at this point. The next would be, you guys really just need to start leaving this to the parents, to be honest. That's kind of the bottom line of what everyone's getting to. If the governor doesn't have to follow her own guidelines, rules, orders, laws, recommendations, then neither do you. We've also talked about the school code, the federal school code, with nothing being able to be in a freezing regardless of an emergency incident. Scott, you brought up mouth guards. Mouth guards, you can breathe through your nose still. We had no graduations thing. The other one was prom. That's just pathetic. That is just pathetic. I am curious where funds went for prom, if there were any made, and where they went, since we did not hold one. Don't understand why we didn't have one in the parking lot, and why a town over has to open up their main street to have one. Vaccines? We all know that that's just, it's just dumb. Are you aware that, are you, do you know why C T A has so many such a long waiting lists? Do you think it's because of the corruption, the staff, the bullying, the drugs, the lack of attention, the weak system? Your parents and families are losing faith and confidence in Cedar Springs, and it's really disheartening. I moved here specifically for the school district that it was ten, fifteen years ago. I'd really like to see that get back. Another thing I'm curious about, are you aware of the placebo vaccine that Pfizer has? So which would mean that they're vaccinated, but they're not really vaccinated, and they're walking around without a mask. That's something to look into. Also, please go to the CDC website and check into the deaths per vaccine if we're, you know, concerned. I do understand you are a public figure, public place, therefore you do have to satisfy everybody, which is why, bottom line, leave it to the parents, the ones that need the protection and feel comfortable with the mask, let them have it. The ones that don't, let them not. If everything was to open up next year, you would allow families to wear a mask if they wanted to. And then, um, I'm also curious, how many elementary kids under the grade five did catch COVID, and how many of their teachers did? I'm also curious of your concerns with the reproductive issues from the vaccine. Thank you.
Time, yeah, timer's going off. Thank you.
Looks like Julie Kaiser is next to share.
I, this is Julie Kaiser. I
Lost her. We lost Julie, if you're listening.
Okay, it looks like we have a person named Sarah who's interested in sharing, so I'll open up her mic.
Okay, sorry, this is Julie Kaiser again. I'm not sure how you heard of that. My phone died.
Okay, no, start from the beginning.
Parent of a fourth grader here at Cedar Springs, reside at one one four five zero Ramsdale Drive, Northeast Rockford. And he has a few things that he would like to say about how he feels about the masks and what he's seeing within the schools. You just have to speak up, buddy.
I don't think it's really fair that the teachers get to take their masks, masks off, and all the children have to wear them all day in the building. And the only times we get to take them off is if we're eating and outside. And I can't breathe, so I, all the time, and a lot of people that I see all take their masks down below their nose, because they can't breathe either. So I think I, I want the no mask rule.
Do you have anything else you want them to know? Clearly, you know where our family stands, and you did not show up here where we could see you face to face, which was a little bit disappointing, since it's very beautiful out. We don't need masks out here. I understand you have things that you need to disclose behind closed doors, and there are rooms here that you could do that in. So I guess, as a parent, I'm just disappointed that you're not here to listen to our concerns, and you're on Zoom, which is very convenient, and anybody can access it from anywhere, which means a parent that cannot be here would also be able to attend. So thank you for your time.
Okay. So I'm not seeing anyone else with a raised hand. Okay, perhaps Mom Sarah's phone is interested in sharing again, so I'll that mic is open.
All right, yeah, this is Sarah Smith. I've talked to you last week, and I've talked to you back in October. And I just, I guess I'm confused about why there's a waiver that you can get from the Michigan Health Department about the vaccine, but we can't use it here, or you don't have it here, or whatever. It's like, what's the deal? Why aren't you giving that information out to people that if they want to fill out a waiver, they can? Why do we have to search for everything? I mean, it's like, you don't want us to know this stuff. I don't understand that. And saying that this vaccine is required? Everything is required. I don't know. It's just, I'm very confused on stuff like that. I also, you know, I did do the prom with my daughter up in Sand Lake, and it was an awesome. If you could see the joy on those kids' faces for just being normal, I was there as a chaperone, and it was the best I've ever seen, like, so many kids so happy and so joyful. And that could have been done through the school, and I'm sad that you guys didn't get to do that and get to experience that. If you go on the, on Facebook and look at the pictures, the joy that I seen in my daughter and my son was unbelievable. And you guys could have that, and we could do normal things if you would just stand up and fight for our kids. I'm just asking again, get rid of the masks completely. If someone wants to wear it, that's their choice. Make it an option. Everything, it says you should wear it. It doesn't say it's mandated. It's whatever. It should. Should does not mean you have to do it just because you don't have the vaccine. You need to look into those little words, should and must are different words. You need to look and understand that what they're saying. They make it seem like we have to, but we really don't. And I just ask that you look a little deeper into the information that you do that. So I don't know if anybody else wanted to speak that doesn't have a phone. Nope, I think that is all that's there in, at the school. Again, I sent you an email asking for you guys to, you know, meet in person. We can do both in person. You could have, it's beautiful outside. You could have been outside and met. And we could still do the Zoom for those that actually can't come, but when we want to come and see you face to face, it would be nice if we could actually do that. I don't know. It's just really, it's frustrating, is what I have to say. So and that's it, I guess.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, there's one other person indicating they would like to talk. So I'll turn Amy's phone on. Or excuse me, Amy's mic on. Okay. All right, Amy, your mic is on.
Am I good? Okay. I'm Amy Chamborne. I'm located at eighty-eight ten Whittle in Rockford. We chose to send our boys, we were in private schools, and we had talked with so many others who were so happy with Cedar Springs School, so we had opted to switch our boys over about four, I think we're going on for almost five years now. And we've been extremely happy. Up until this past year, it's just been disheartening. I'm probably going to be repetitive on some of the things. One thing I am going to bring up is the Michigan vaccine waiver. I feel like this should be something that should be taken into consideration. If it's already in place for a student, I guess I would like you to all look into this and why that is still not going to hold up if they do have that in place. I don't see the reason why it should not be, especially with an experimental vaccine. And just today, I read a whole article about this vaccine, and already they're having problems with the ages twelve to seventeen year olds with heart conditions, fluid on the heart, heart palpitations. There's been a couple deaths, so that scares the heck out of me. My child, who's in eighth grade, has had dizzy spells off and on for the last few weeks. Fortunately, the school has accommodated some mask breaks when needed. But I just feel like this is, it's sad. I don't think that they should be put in this position. I feel strongly that there should not be a vaccine mandate. If somebody has a waiver on file, that should stand for this vaccine as well. And the masks, everything should be a choice. It has to come back into the hands of the parents. It's our choice to put the health of our children first. And so I feel passionately about that. And I really hope that you all take that into consideration and are really hearing all of us and consider that going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. Okay. Do we have any other indicators, someone that would like to address the board?
I'm not seeing any other indicators.
Okay. So we'll move forward with public comments being closed. Thank you for those that joined us to speak. And we'll move to our action portion of our meeting. And our first action item up for tonight is the K C L A literacy resources, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
For.
Is there any? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Judge Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes. Motion carries with a seven oh. Action item B, food service equipment purchase. I will entertain a motion for as presented.
So move. Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes. The food service equipment purchase is approved. Action item C, the twenty twenty-one school building and site bond sale ratifying resolution. I'll entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
For.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner? Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Judge Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes. Motion carries. Action item D is the twenty twenty-one S B L F refunding bond sale ratifying resolution. I'll entertain a motion as presented.
So move. So move. Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes. Motion carries. Next up, we have the K I A S B election resolution, and I'll entertain a motion who we would support. With Matt going to cast that ballot for our district.
So Heidi, there are three positions open and three people running, correct?
I think there's two positions, and there's three people running.
Okay. Two positions, five people running. There are two, two people running for the full term.
Okay.
And then three people running for the partial term.
I would move that we support Matt ready for the full term from Kenowa Hills. And I would also move that we support Laura Featherston from Rockford for the partial term.
Okay.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Judge Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes. Motion carries. The next action item is the Board of Education position statement, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Judge Gilmore?
Yes.
Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yeah.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes. The Board of Education position statement is approved as presented. And our last item for action is student discipline for student two zero And our last item for action is student discipline for student 20.21.02. And I would entertain a motion.
I will move that student 20.21.02 be suspended for the rest of the, for the remainder of the school year. And upon reentry, be required to do the victim offender conference as well as the counseling referral.
Support.
Okay, Chris, we have Shannon on that. Is there any discussion? Okay, having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Yes.
Justice Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Motion carries for the expulsion. So that brings us to the communication por- portion of our meeting and communication for the Board of Education. I did attend online, the Members Matter, MESB update, can swap information. And there were various topics talked about, various concerns that different boards are getting from their community as much as we are. I was pleased to see that we have moved, I want to say quicker than some districts, but every community is different. So that doesn't mean we're right and they're wrong. That just means that's the position we're in. So there was different talk about different laws and MDHHS and how it works that we work under their order. So there was a lot of information talked about that way. So I attended that. The other piece for communication, we do have the graduation on full open. And we also, you've all received a different invitation to the honors breakfast. If you're able to attend that, email Kami and let her know. So that is all I have for the board communication. Trent, did you have something?
Yeah, I would like us to write, if we could, I agree with the, the letter that we've got written. I think that makes sense. But I'd, I'd almost like to see us write a second letter about the vaccine being tied to the masks. Michigan does have all three exemptions intact for vaccines. And under the current guidance, those kids would never be able to take their masks off if they don't get the COVID vaccine. And that doesn't make any sense to me based on the informed consent and based on the three exemptions that are in place in the state of Michigan. I think we should write a position letter about having the vaccine tied to masks and send that to the state.
I thank you for that information and I'll take it into consideration. The other item that we need to know is as long as it's an exper- experimental vaccine, it's not going to be required. I understand that it's tied to the mask. So that is a piece too. So we'll be watching for that and, and do what we can to advocate for. I think clearly, you know, we're doing what we can with the circumstance that we're in and the orders that we are under to, you know, move back to normal. So, yes. Anything else for the board? Okay, Scott, communication for us.
So just two quick pieces. One, I included in board book, a copy of a letter that we received from a family in Cedar Springs just thanking the district for their support of the FFA tractor parade that took place on May 6th on campus. The other piece is just to confirm, as Heidi shared, Ron Baranwald, principal at the high school, has been communicating regularly, communicating regularly with the families of seniors in regard to the updates to graduation. And so families know that the attendance restrictions have been lifted and we will not be having any type of required ticketing for the graduation event on June 3rd.
And we'll get to have it all in one night, not multiple nights. So it'll be one grand occasion.
Correct. And, you know, it's also important to note, you know, the students have been involved throughout the year on, on multiple decisions. So decisions related to graduation, you know, we did not know about the lifting of the attendance requirements that took place last week. We were ready to reserve the Lake Michigan Credit Union Ballpark and be able to have at least 1,800 people in attendance. But our, our seniors, the senior leaders voted to have limited attendance at, at our home stadium. They wanted to do graduation in Cedar Springs. Similarly, we had Lake Michigan Credit Union reserved for a seniors, or excuse me, a junior, senior spring fling event. But the students did, did not support that activity, that event. Rather, they wanted to do something different. And so we've, we've been giving our students options and we have been including their voice in all of the decision making process.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our communication and our planning. Went a little bit in with communication, different dates and things. So our next board meeting is scheduled for,
June 14.
Thank you. June 14th. And we've got graduation and things to get through before then. So we'll see what's going on in the state and we'll look forward to seeing everybody one way or the other, whether it's Zoom or in person. So we'll go from there. So thank you for joining us and we conclude the meeting at 7:55. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.